It's my watch, my iPad, and my computer.
Great. We ready? We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to our November 7th regular city council meeting. It's nice to see everybody here tonight. We're gonna start with roll call, please.
Councilor Bosmans.
Present.
Senator Buell. Councilor Woodruff.
Here.
Councilor Yazi.
Here.
And Mayor Youssef.
Here, thank you. May we have the introduction of the trans later.
Yes, hi, everyone. I hope you can hear my audio okay. I'm Diego Pons, usually here with my colleague Sam Guzman. On behalf of the CLC, thanks as always for inviting us to your meeting and created this space towards language justice so that people can help have the space to participate and engage in the language of their heart, the language that you choose most comfortable in, will continue using simultaneous interpretation in English and Spanish for today's meeting. After I finish saying this in English, I'll repeat the instructions in Spanish. And then at that moment, we'll start with the interpretation. Once interpretation is on, you'll be able to see that globe icon that says interpretation in the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. I'll ask you to please select the globe icon and please to select your preferred language. And if you're joining the meeting on your cellphone or your tablet, you'll instead be looking for the more button or the three dots button to select your preferred language this other way. As always, if you're not fully bilingual, strongly encourage you to select your preferred language. And if you are bilingual, feel free to listen to everyone in the original language. And always a special reminder for the English-speaking audience, just please pay attention to the speed in which you're speaking. Please make sure you're speaking at a conversational pace like this. And please make sure you don't pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much for that. Buenas tardes a todos y todas. Mi nombre es Diego Pons. Estoy aquí de parte de la cooperativa comunitaria de la justicia al lenguaje con mi colega Sam Guzman. Gracias como siempre por invitarnos hoy a su reunión, donde los sueños ahora de esta reunión se han comprometido hoy a servir la justicia al lenguaje. Eso significa que queremos crear un espacio para que todos puedan continuar participando e involucrándose en el idioma a su corazón. Simplemente el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Y vamos a continuar hoy utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Cuando yo termine de decir esto, vamos a activar la interpretación. Ya con esta activada interpretación, usted va a poder ver ese icono del globo de la tierra que era interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor, seleccione ese icono del globo de la tierra y, por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido. Y si ustedes asistieron hoy a la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor, busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o posiblemente el botón de tres puntos para que pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Y si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos aconsejar que seleccione su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Si usted sí es bilingüe, sienta sí de escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. Muchas gracias.
Great, thank you so very much. All right, with that, we're gonna go to opening remarks by mayor and council. Council, do you have any opening remarks? I will just add that we've had some very, very successful city council office hours. We've been doing it for several months now, twice a month. And they've been going really well. They're very well attended. We do it on a rotating basis with our counselors, and we're gonna be continuing that. Currently, our schedule goes through the end of January, and I'll be emailing with council. And staff will help us continue to set that agenda through April of 2024. I just wanted to let the community know. It's a great way for us to connect with our residents. And with that, we will move on to city manager updates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First under city manager updates is the Sarah Hill, our transportation director, introducing some students from Fort Lewis College and going over a collaboration that we had with them in regards to our ridership survey update.
Thank you, Jose. I'm Sarah Hill. I'm the transportation director. And as council knows, Durango Transit does an annual onboard ridership survey so that we can understand the needs of our writers, who our writers are, how we can better meet their needs. And this year, we partnered with Dr. Kaitlin Mattis' Sustainability by Design class at Fort Lewis College. And her students actually administered the survey for us onboard. They entered all of the data, and then they very thoughtfully analyzed the data. Their class is focusing on real-world, on-the-ground data collection and investigation. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kaia and James, who are representing the class, and they're gonna walk you through some of the highlights of the survey that stood out to them. Here's just an overview of the mission, vision, and values. And hello, everyone. My name's Kaia.
Nawa Kwaha Hatzo Imtoya, James Scherhantburns Akon, Koygu Mase Chawi. Good evening, councilors. My name is James Scherhantburns. I am involved with the Kaia Tribe of Oklahoma. On my mother's side, I am also from the Caddo and Pawnee nations of Oklahoma. And thank you for allowing Kaia and I to be here to present our findings to you.
So the reason that we're here is because we are part of the first-ever class about sustainability being offered at Fort Lewis. It's ENV 393 Sustainability by Design taught by Dr. Kaitlin Mattis. And in this class, we discuss incorporating sustainability into communities by redesigning products and infrastructure to make them more environmentally friendly. So beyond covering topics such as waste management, food systems, and economic structures, one of the main topics that we covered this semester was transportation. And we specifically looked at public transportation and how it can make a city more sustainable.
And so in our public transportation unit, we had a class project where we partnered with Durango Transit. And this involved us to go into the field, onto the buses, to administer the ridership surveys. And in doing this, we gave the surveys out to the writers, asking them to fill out the questions in the questionnaires. All of them were optional, but after we gathered the data, we compiled that to analyze to figure out what trends showed up from the answers and from the data that was provided from the writers. And so some of these trends included the frequency of the riders, the annual income, the writer's occupation, the frequency of the riders, and if they had a personal vehicle available. And so some of the writers that we got, the majority of the respondents were our daily writers. And arguably, these are the best writers to get our data from, as they are the ones who are on the transit system. Daily, they are the ones who understand the transit and how to use it along with the routes. Along with that, we also recorded that 77% of our respondents did not have access to a vehicle. And this is important data, as this shows how many people actually rely on the transit system and how they need this to go about their daily lives here in Durango, whether that's to go to their jobs, to visit family, to run errands, or to get groceries. For the annual income, we found that the majority of the respondents made under $50,000 a year. And the age group that was best represented were those between 25 and 40 years old. Along with the most common occupations that we had were those in the service industry. This includes hotel, bar, or restaurant workers. After that was those who were unemployed, and then those who were college students.
So part of the survey asked respondents to give a satisfaction rating on a scale of 1 to 10 and then provide three reasons for why they gave this rating. And as you can see, the average satisfaction rating this year was 8.28 out of 10. And that's an increase from the past two years and one of the highest average ratings that we've seen since the survey started in 2015. This graph here is a representation of all of the different reasons that people provided for giving their satisfaction rating. The green ones are more positive, while the red are more constructive or negative. And as you can see, there's a good spread of comments, but overall, there were more positive responses negative. The top positive comments included convenience, nice drivers, and reliability. And the more negative comments were limited hours, mean drivers, and the buses not being clean or timely. And just something of note that the class noticed as we were analyzing the data is that some of the top negative comments tend to be more subjective, such as mean drivers and the buses not being clean. So that just could be a result of catching people on an off day and might not fully represent how they always feel about the transit system. So, sorry, there was a slide that is missing, but that's okay. So the reasons for satisfaction are strongly correlated to other community responses that we've gotten from past surveys. And looking at this community input is the main reason that the transit system distributes these surveys each year. And to address the need for extended hours and extended routes, the transit team implemented two major changes in 2023. First off, they expanded the routes to serve Highway 160 West. And according to the 2023 survey, 17% of riders now rely on this route. And then the most recent change that they made was starting Durango, which is an on-demand ride service that provides rides to people outside of the regular hours of operation. This bus runs seven days a week into the evening and night hours and is especially beneficial for service workers and college students, which you may recall made up a large representation of transit riders. And beyond that, it's also a great alternative for people who are looking to avoid drinking and driving after a night out. So not only is it giving people a reliable way to get home from their evening jobs, but it is also keeping the roads and the community safe.
And so on this picture on the left, it shows 50 cars lined up bumper to bumper and their owners right next to a single transit bus. And so this is important because the 23% of respondents who did have access to a personal vehicle but chose to take the transit, this shows that they are trying to live a more sustainable life or try to take more environmental-friendly actions. And so by taking the transit system, this helps reduce their own carbon emission footprint. This helps decongest the roads along with helping them save money from not having to buy gas. And so whether or not the riders are choosing to take the transit out of necessity or choice, the transit system helps make Durango a more sustainable city. Thank you. And are there any questions?
Thank you so much. Questions from council? Go ahead, Council Yazi.
Well, thank you for coming. I don't have a question, but I'd like to say that I'm really impressed with having a sustainability class up at Fort Lewis College, because I attended Fort Lewis College also, and when I was going there, they didn't have a sustainability class. And if they did, I would have taken it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Yazi. Other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you as well. I think it's great to see you up here, all of you, and having done that work and presenting it in a very professional manner. So thank you. And the bus example was really nice to see how that changes the impacts and the use of fossil fuels if we all use transit some more. I have a question more for the city. This is more associated with the study session, so bear with me. It's not really related to you. We had a community survey results during the study session. And to me, those results were very disappointing. It showed low scores on the place to work, cost of living, parking, community design, a whole list of things. And one of them that stood out is poor results for governance. Now, I bring this up because I was wondering why such an important survey, and I'm not downplaying your survey here, but that was a community-wide survey that addresses many things, went on a study session. And then we have this survey being presented during a more attended or more visible regular meeting, and this being the Fort Lewis College and the Durango Transit Collaboration Ridership Survey. So can you provide some background on the choice that was made between putting the community-wide survey on a study session, even though I find it a very useful and beneficial survey? And then, you know, is there maybe a point in time that that community-wide survey will be presented or discussed at a future point in time so that a community?
I'm just not sure I'm tracking. Does that question have any... Do you got... Is that directed to these young people?
No, it's associated with this survey being presented here in the community-wide survey that is sound. Not being presented, and I was just wondering...
I mean, I'll leave it to the chair, but I'm not tracking what this has to do with what these kids from the college just spoke about.
Yeah, I would agree. We'll try to stick with the survey that you're presenting, which we sincerely appreciate. Other questions from council?
Great work in finding collaborative way to work with city government and tying that together with Fort Lewis, two great parts of our community. So thanks for all of you for putting the time and effort into giving us good data that's not just anecdotal, but it gives us guideposts for good operational decision-making. So thank you for putting in the work. This gives us a really good ability to make good quality decisions based upon good data collection. So thank you.
And I do have a couple of questions too. So did everyone participate in everyone here in the class on the trolleys?
You are seeing, I think, two different classes that are represented tonight. But if you were in Dr. Mattis' class, will you stand up and show council who worked on this project?
Excellent. Thank you.
More importantly, sorry, are you getting extra credit for coming today?
Yeah, exactly.
Because if you're not, you should.
They're getting job offers from the transportation department.
Oh, there you go. There you go. And just a couple of other questions. I find it interesting that statistic, mostly 25 to 40-year-olds that you noted riding the trolley. Did you see also elderly, a lot of elderly riders? I'm just curious, like, kind of what portion of elderly we might see on those on our transit? Do you have any idea?
We don't have the figure on the PowerPoint, but it is on the cumulative document, I believe, that Sarah shared out. And that does give statistics on each age group. So yes, there were elderly people represented. We just highlighted, I guess, like, the most represented based on each statistic that we were analyzing.
Okay. And it would make sense. I mean, maybe going to work, going to school, things like that, but that's great. And I was also... Yeah, you know, I love to see the nice riders, the nice drivers and reliable. I just think that's so great. And we've had a little bit of that feedback in our outreach, thanks to surveys like this and your help. And every time I see them now, I'm always kind of wave at them, because it's just so... It's so nice to see them take pride in their work. It's a very important job. So this is great. Thank you so much for your efforts and for doing this. And I was also really happy, you know, it is a result of surveys like this that we do things like expand to 160 when we can and when we have the budget for it. And that is an extremely important route, especially with the new residences at Durango that we did the groundbreaking ceremony for, which will have 120 units up there. So we definitely want to see transit getting up there and back into town and out to Mercy if needed. So that's really great. And it's a result of this type of work that you guys are doing. So I really wanted to thank all of you for your help. Great, thank you so much.
Definitely. Just want to say thank you again from the city staff perspective. Really appreciate the work that you've brought to the survey and really having an opportunity to work on some projects and help out the city. I think this is the third time we've used Fort Lewis College. We had a marketing class that helped us and then also an economics class that helped us. So the partnership with Fort Lewis has always been fruitful, and you've always done outstanding work. So thank you all very much for your work and your time dedicated to this project.
And if I may, while Tom is pulling up the next presentation, if we could get Dr. Mattis' class to come stand in the dais and get a photo with council, that would be really great if you guys would entertain.
Absolutely. We'd love it. Thank you. If you guys could come up in front, then.
While they're kind of getting information, just one last thank you to the class. They were so professional and did such a really good thoughtful job. So appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna keep going on our meeting. You guys are welcome to stay if you'd like. But if you'd like to leave too, I'll give you a second, but you're welcome to stay. It's up to you. And then we'll go on with your next item, I think. Or do you have two? Yeah, okay, great.
Hello again. So I'm also gonna give an update on our Durango Transit Evening Service that launched on October 18th. We're calling it Durango Service. And it meets a number of council strategic plan goals, the effective infrastructure network goal of expanding transit, the affordability and economic opportunity goal of getting people to work and contributing to an affordable and economic thriving community. And then the environmental and sustainability and resilience goal that reduces the city's carbon footprint. So these are a sampling of some of the comments that we received in our 2023 ridership survey that you just saw. One of the top requests that we get and the highest priorities from our writers are expanded hours. We currently operate from 7:00 AM to 8:40 PM, and that can be very prohibitive to anybody who works late, who wants to enjoy a social life, maybe who wants to attend a city council meeting even. So this has been a goal of our team for some time to find funding and opportunity to be able to expand hours to better serve the needs of our ridership. So we were successful in securing a $50,000 grant for expanding services. That is through CDOT's FTA 5311 program. As a department, we sat down and identified our different priorities for the service, what it would feel like to the user and what our service priorities would be, and we've listed a couple of those here. After a little research, we decided that the on-demand micro-transit model of transit was the best suited for the evening service. So right now, most of the other routes that you might be familiar with are fixed route service. They operate at dedicated transit stops on a designated route. We don't deviate from that. And that's an effective model for, you know, the 400,000 rides that we give a year during the day hours. But in order to kind of better meet the needs of nighttime riders, we went with this on-demand service, which just means curb-to-curb. And it's gonna look a little bit more like an Uber or a Lyft service. It's app-based. And it's really safe for those evening hours where people might be traveling alone, where the bus will pick them up at a curb near where they request the ride and drop them off right where they're going. There's gonna be really short wait times. The maximum wait time is gonna be 30 minutes on this service. So far, we're seeing six-minute waits. That will increase as demand increases, but the maximum that anybody will ever wait for the bus from their order is 30 minutes. It's accessible. Every single transit vehicle is ADA accessible. It's appropriate for all ages and ability levels. It's equitable. The rides are $2 per ride anywhere in city limits, and all Fort Lewis students ride free with your student pass. Thanks, Luke. It's very efficient. It's demand-responsive. And the software program will actually organize the rides based on where people are being picked up and where they're going so that it's possible that there'll be a shared ride, which just means that we're really using our fleet and all of our resources effectively. So it is a seven-day-a-week service, 8:00 PM to midnight. And we launched on October 18th and are already seeing really good results. So here's just a snapshot of how easy it is to use. The app is available in both English and Spanish. You'll plug in the destination. It's gonna give you your ride details for you to accept, and then it'll be a real-time tracker of where your bus is and how far away they are, when you can expect them to show up. On the right-hand side there, you can see you can save your favorite rides. You can check your history. On the right-hand side there, you can see you can save your favorite rides, you can check your history, store your payment method, and create group rides with your friends. So here's a couple of the service highlights. This is a very new service. We're only about two and a half weeks in, but we've given about 320 rides. Like I said, the average wait time is six minutes. We haven't had to deny a ride yet. We're seeing a lot of work commuters using it to get home. And then obviously, our busier nights are Friday and Saturday night. We're seeing a lot of larger groups that we're able to accommodate go downtown. And so far, we've only received five-star ratings. So hope to keep that trend going. I I wanted to include this slide just to show you the new versus returning riders. So the green bars are people who create new accounts and ride for the first time, and then the gray bars are showing people that are. And I'm ready to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Questions from council?
No questions, just a comment really. So being in the food and beverage industry, both from the consumer side and then the employee side, I mean, literally the day that that the flyer was dropped off and then the little QR codes were dropped off, people were just like, what? They're $2? I mean, they they couldn't, it was almost too good to be real. So really good on executing this, to be just coming from a concept to making this a reality and then to make it just ease of use for for anybody. So and what an asset for our community for for all, you know, to from public safety to cheap rides to be able to get home safely is paramount. So thank you so much for the great work.
Other other comments, questions? Thank you so much for your help and your efforts. It just seems like really great innovative work happening in your department, and we really appreciate it. It's very beneficial.
Pass that on to the team. They've done a really good job. And then one thing I did want to mention that I left out for budget discussions, the $50,000 grant that we were awarded to expand the service has been rolled into our formula funding annually. So we can expect this amount of funding moving forward until there's some type of a formula change at the Transportation Commission level, which we're not anticipating. So all that to say is it's a sustainably funded service.
Excellent. Thank you so much for all your efforts. We really appreciate it. It's great. All right, moving on to committee, board, and liaison reports. Council?
Oh, man. I'm gonna say it once. I'll say it again. You paid for the whole seat, but you're only gonna need the edge. There's a lot of time between last meeting and now. I had the CEC, which was the, oh my God, I'm forgetting. Yeah, Creative Economy. Wow. Well, I've got some great news. There's a Common Threads update. Another bid was put out and a local taker is going to take it up on the project. So we're actually going to get that off the ground. So we're super excited. The the bid came in a little bit higher than I think they wanted to, so it's double the amount of what we originally had appropriated. However, I think we're gonna try to get that approved tonight for an additional appropriation. And then we can potentially start this year to get that up and running. So how many years has that been? Seven? Six? There's a lot of, yeah, it's it's been some time. So anyways, that that's that's the big one. Additionally, there's $80,000 approved for some public art to be constructed at Schneider Park with the new construction, the pickleball courts. So the Creative Economy Commission is looking at what parks and rec will have available for smart installations. And so until those locations are finalized, they're going to put out a call to artists. Also, some more art installations are going to go in at San Arida Park with $100,000 budgeted from wayfinding signage to potentially a mural. There's another great opportunity for our local artisans to showcase their work. Also traveled to Vail on the 20th of October for CAS, which is the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, which is a great organization that lobbies on our collective behavs for mountain communities to our state and federal legislature. But it was great. We kicked off the meeting talking about funding mechanisms, required extended provider responsibility, super engaging stuff. AKA the EPR, but this is that statewide recycling program that was propped up last year. So the state has chosen a circular action alliance as the C or the CAA as the producer responsibility organization, the PRO, which is a 501(c)(3) to support the successful implementation of the EPR for paper and packaging. There's a lot of a lot of acronyms in there. Yeah, the city manager and the the mayor talk about how Vail and Eagle County are tackling the housing issue over there, and they're doing some pretty cool stuff that are really progressive and kind of thinking about how we look at housing from a municipality standpoint. What else? We had a, I had a great childcare meeting with James and Patty with Aleah regarding childcare in our community. We kind of keep seeing childcare as being one of those barriers for for quality of life here in Durango. So this is a great conversation around creativity and forward-thinking approach on how we tackle childcare, affordable childcare in our community. So it was a really enlightening meeting. The stats show that 60% of children in Colorado have no access to early education. So their focus is on children up to six and also providing guides, AKA teachers, with pay at 30 bucks an hour. So there's more to come down this front, but it's a pretty cool opportunity for all regarding that. I'm sure I can speak for the rest of us, but we had a meeting, I had a meeting with Jack Turner regarding the Durango Cowboy Gathering and potentially a horseback social in downtown Durango. So there's, there's, it's a pretty creative and kind of outside-the-box look at how we bridge this urban-rural divide. And it's going to be a heavy lift, but I thought it was, you know, could be cool from a programmatic side. But yeah, it was a busy three weeks.
Thank you so much for attending the CAS meeting. We really appreciate you being present for that and representing the city. Other counselors? Go ahead.
Thank you, Dave. Anyways, I also met with Jack Turner about the ridership social down Main Street, and it sounded really positive. But the Durango Cowboy Poetry Gathering is turning into the Durango Cowboy Gap. They have a new mission. The mission is, the mission of the Durango Cowboy Gathering is to cultivate mutual respect and camaraderie among our rural and urban communities by celebrating, preserving the heritage, culture, traditions, and indomitable spirit of the American West. So I told Jack that I was all into helping whatever I could. So that's all good. And I also had a chance to meet with Andrew from Visit Durango. We talked about future possibilities with destination, marketing, and tourism for the city of Durango and how we could work together with the city and visit Durango. That was a very fruitful meeting. But the most positive meeting I went to was on November 1st at 5:30 at the REC Center, and that was the Eminence Community Drive, Community Meeting for Eminence View Drive, because they've been having issues with safety down that road. It's on the north side of town. And it was a community meeting held by our public service, our transportation department, multimodal. God, a few other of our infrastructure people there. And it was really wonderful because between 50 and 60 residents came down to voice their concerns about safety down their their street. And they had a quite a few good suggestions with doing some traffic calming things on their road, you know, such as putting it, slow down the traffic, also maybe put up a couple of solar lights, maybe doing some mowing and cutting and trimming of the brush and the grass on the streets and maybe lighting up the trolley stop. It was, I was real impressed because our City of Durango employees, employees handled the meetings really well because they went ahead and had individual groups. They probably had about 10 different tables, and they all went to the tables and got the suggestions and the criticism from the neighborhood there. So I was really impressed with the format. So thank you very much.
Thank you for attending.
Those good updates. I I like the mission for the cowboy gathering where it's bridging and getting together as urban and rural communities and members. The world is too divided. I am, I attended in October 27, Colorado Communities for Climate Action Meeting. It was a more high-level meeting about personnel and reviews, engagement opportunities, and updates from the executive director. So I'll keep it short.
We had, we did have a couple of week, three weeks between meetings, which was great, but it was a very busy three weeks for the city. We, I I just want to, you know, highlight the amazing parade for Sep Kousse. And I really wanted to thank our city staff for their efforts at making this happen and making this a safe and secure event for our community. It was a tremendous effort. And I think our staff, I just wanted to really give them a shout out because, I mean, we had, we had so many staff members participate and be present, and it was such a great success that I just wanted to make sure that I publicly thanked our City of Durango staff for all of their efforts at making this and contributing how we could at making this a really great community celebration. I had the pleasure of speaking as mayor, which I think was probably, will probably be the highlight of my time because there was just to see the energy of the crowd present at that parade was just phenomenal. So it was really, really neat to see our community gather for that, and I thank everybody for being present and coming out. We also had the groundbreaking ceremony for the residences at Durango, which also went very well. Mayor Proton Buehl and I were able to speak on behalf of the city council, and Counselor Woodruff was also present. Partners of this endeavor were also present, as well as many other others, very excited to celebrate this project. And I wanted to just reiterate that this was the former Best Western Hotel on 160. It's a visionary public-private partnership that will provide 120 units of permanent affordable housing at 30 to 60% area median income up to, for up to 250 community members. So that's really exciting progress to see in our community. And I want to give a very special shout out to Eva Henson, our Housing Innovation Program Manager, who worked so hard to make this project a reality. And also a thanks to our city manager, Jose Madrigal, who had the vision and foresight to set up our Housing Innovation Program that can make these projects a reality. So wonderful step in the right direction. Thank you for our city for that. Jose and I had the opportunity to meet with Mark Katz and Maura Compton of Durango Mesa Park Foundation to talk about the future of the park and to reiterate our commitment as a city to this project. I also met with CEO of Mercy Regional Medical Center, Brandon Mancini, to hear firsthand about all of their efforts to really engage with the community to provide quality health care for our community, such an important need. And so I was very happy to be able to meet with him and get an update on all that they're doing. I had also my city council office hours yesterday, full two hours of hearing from our community, and I'll follow up with staff on those items presented. So thank you again for city staff on all of that. And with that, we'll move on to public comment on agenda items only. Can we see if we have any public comment? This is for items eight, nine, and 11. We'll take public comment and virtual comment. Okay, thank you. Any, is there anyone who might want to comment virtually?
Uh, no, mayor. No one has raised their hand.
All right. Thank you so much. Then Fay, just in time, if we can please have, move on to the consent agenda and have a reading of the items.
Item 8.11 is approval of minutes. 8.11 is approval of minutes of the October 17th City Council Special Meeting. 8.12 is approval of minutes of the October 17th City Council Regular Meeting. There are no items under 8.2. 8.3 is a resolution approving the 2024 Employee Handbook submitted by Bonnie Kling. There are no items for 8.4 or 8.5.
Is there any council that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda?
May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Yousif?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
And Count, and Mayor Proton Buehl is absent.
Thank you. Moving item on to item 10.1, public hearing to review proposed lots 1R, R3, BLD Preliminary Minor Subdivision. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Mayor Mark Williams with our Community Development Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mark Williams, Community Development Department. And this is, as you said, a subdivision for the BLD apartment complex. It is a public hearing, which is required for preliminary minor subdivisions. And to get you oriented with where we are, there were three of you who were involved in this approval process last year, but two new council people were not. So we're just west of Mercy Hospital in that green area. It's about a 20-acre lot. Just to the south is where Mesa Verde Senior Assisted Living is going to be going in pretty soon. And so last year, city council approved preliminary planned development for the apartments that included 492 units. The approval included amenities, project design, all the utilities and access. So what's happening now is BLD has requested a subdivision to divide the property into two properties. It's easier for the purposes of financing to do that. If there are two properties, they can use more lending sources. Those lending sources can collateralize those different properties more easily. So it makes the lenders more comfortable with loaning for those projects. And as you probably know, construction financing is difficult right now. So we're for the project, and hopefully this will get BLD across the finish line. In terms of what's changing, really, it's pretty minor. There are a couple of easements that will have to be added to the subdivision plat to go from one property to the next. You would now need an easement, cross-access easement, that's pretty standard. Also for water, for utilities and for storm sewers to drain across the different projects, you would need an easement for that as well. And then also a little landscaping would need to be added at the mutual border between the two properties. So this is what the property looks like, which was what was approved last year, and I think we have a red pointer, don't we? Yeah. So the subdivision would occur along this line. Everything to the south is phase one. Everything to the north is phase two. And that actually tracks with what was approved last year. They had a 287-unit phase one and a 205-unit phase two. They're planning to do phase one as soon as they can get through the review process and get building permits so that the subdivision doesn't actually affect that in any way. This is a close-up of the subdivision plat. The plat itself is much larger. It's a large piece of land. But there's a zoom in, and you can see where there's some of the hatched areas or these easements that I was talking about. So the project complies with city subdivision procedures. It was approved last year at Planning Commission and City Council. All that would be left after this, if it's approved, is a staff-level final plat review. The project conforms with the city's affordability and economic opportunity goals from the strategic plan. And you can see on the right side of the screen the details of that, of that goal. We did not receive any public input regarding this. And the recommended motion is to move to approve the request of the subdivision and have the applicant submit the final plat Mylar at the appropriate time and then have the mayor sign those Mylars when she needs to. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion from council?
A move to approve the request for lot 1R-R3 BLD Preliminary Minor Subdivision. Direct the application to submit that subdivision for final plat review and authorize the mayor to sign the subdivision Mylars at the appropriate time.
Second.
I, oh, public hearing? Well, I I'm going to open the public hearing now. Do we have any public comment, live or virtual? I, oh, public hearing? Well, I'm going to open the public hearing now. Do we have any public comment, live or virtual? This is item number 10. Anything virtually?
No, mayor, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have discussion from council?
The only, I guess it kind of comes down to the affordable housing side, you know, we're doing, well, the builders doing 5% of the units, 25 in total for below market rates, kind of focusing that 80 to 90% AMI. That's guaranteed for 30 years if I, if I read it correctly. What, what is the application process going to be like? Is that going to be the developer that's going to be going through this process? Or are there any sort of like sectors that will be prioritized, like first responders or teachers?
I think if we want to get into the details of the Affordable Housing Agreement, I would turn it over to Eva Henson.
Sorry, Eva.
Good evening, Eva Henson, Housing Innovation Manager. Some of those specific details are certainly going to be worked through in a finer detail at a later time. We typically partner with our Housing Solutions for the Southwest nonprofit agency who helps us with those income qualifications and ongoing administration and monitoring for compliance and enforcement, but we haven't figured out the marketing strategy quite yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from council?
I, I think this is a great project with a lot of units. And I hope this contractor, after this minor change in the, in the subdivision is able to move forward. So thank you for bringing it and presenting it.
Great. I would agree. I hope to see this project come to fruition and actually get built units. With that, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Yazi?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
All right, moving on to public comment on non-agenda related items.
Go ahead and state that this section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to city council. As this is a hybrid meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. All right. We'll start with Ms. Sweetie Marbury. If you'll state your name and if you're a resident of the city.
My name is Sweetie Marbury. Again, yes, I am a resident of our wonderful town. I'm here tonight to address two issues. The first is about the Midtown Safety Project. I've read the focus group minutes. I attended the public meeting and at the library. And everyone that spoke that night was against the roundabouts. So I have a suggestion. One would be to reduce the speed to 15 miles per hour coming down Florida before you get into the curb. The other one would be to reduce the speed limit on the Third Avenue Boulevard to 15 miles per hour and enforce that. Because everyone learns to slow down when they get a ticket. That worked on 32nd Avenue, 32nd Street. I also suggest that you close the left turn lane on the Boulevard. And then you restore the cut through on 14th at the, whatever you want to call it, the esplanade, that's what I would call it. And that would allow cars to travel north at the light at 14th. They'd have a safe way to turn and go north. Those are my suggestions. I don't know what the cost would be to restore the cut, but I'm sure it'd be much less money than to deal with a roundabout and the angst that it would cause for the neighborhood. The second issue is, please let the public know about the 50/50 sidewalk program. It's been very valuable for homeowners to improve their own crumbling sidewalks, especially in old Durango on the east and west side. I took advantage of that in 2013. There was always a waitlist. I know, and it was a five-year payback, which doesn't put a financial burden really on the homeowner over five years. I see the budget is at $50,000. I looked at the budget. And that's the same amount that was allocated in 2013. And there's always a waitlist. That means that someone else gets bumped off the list. I'm an advocate in your budget process for raising that amount. Anywhere from 75 to 100,000 to allow people to take advantage of this wonderful safety operation. It will be safer for the public for walking, for the kids on my street, for example, and the, the people that walk their dogs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Anisi.
My name's Karen Brookley Anisi and I am a resident of the city. I just want to thank you and thank the city staff for appointing me to Durango's first focus group, Focus Group for the Roundabout. While there was no support for the roundabout, there were many really good alternative suggestions for making malfunction junction safe for, for the motorists, for cyclists, and for pedestrians. And I appreciated, I appreciated sitting in the group because some of the suggestions were as simple as eliminating left turns, rerouting traffic and decreasing speed as one of the previous speakers, as Sweetie said. So I enjoyed the creative brainstorming and the thoughtful deliberation among the group members. And I look forward to the city's final staff report. Finally, I want to compliment the city on its decision to first look to the residents who live on Junction Street and to the Junction Street users to figure out what should happen there. It makes sense to gather feedback on the front end to build collaborative support before spending time and energy and tax dollars to then later have to muster up buy-in for a predetermined solution. And I have to admit that I'm a little envious. I wish we had done the Junction Street model when we started talking about fixing malfunction junction many months ago. So I hope you continue to value having a finger on the pulse of the community by starting with the people first. The people who will live with the outcome of whatever decisions that you make, because you're making important decisions on their behalf. And frankly, you need and you deserve their support. That's all I want to say is offer my gratitude for the opportunity to serve on this focus group. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Zeeland Eaton.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Zeeland Eaton, as she already stated, and I'm here to represent Durango High School. I'm Durango High School Student Body Co-President and I'm here just to report to you guys on the happenings at Durango High School. So firstly, we just finished our homecoming two weeks ago. It was super successful. We had over 900 students attend, which was super, super awesome. We also carried out our second annual downtown parade, which had over 20 floats and showcased the diversity in the DHS community, which was super awesome. We held a diverse tailgate, which led into the football game in which Durango High School Football Team defeated Mead. And we clinched a spot in the playoffs, which was amazing as well. As far as theater goes, DHS Troop 1096 is currently performing The Hobbit. They will have shows this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM and an additional matinee performance at 2:00 on Saturday. Tickets will be sold at the door. As far as curriculum goes, one of our transition classes created their own business opportunity by taking orders for Halloween candy from teachers and shopping within a budget, writing invoices, and practicing consumer service while delivering orders, which taught them great real-world applicable business skills. With our clubs and activities, FFA this past week attended the 96th National FFA Convention and Expo in Indianapolis, Indiana. On this trip, six Durango FFA members had the opportunity to develop leadership skills, meet with colleges from across the country, hear from keynote speakers about their experiences with leadership in the FFA, and talk with industry professionals about possible career paths and collaborate with FFA members from across the nation. One of our members had the tremendous opportunity to present on the national stage about her National FFA Living Service Grant. With this grant, she has bought eight chickens, donated their eggs to local homeless shelters, and started the, started recuperating the chicken manure in order to fertilize vegetables that she will eventually give to the homeless shelter as well. This grant is ongoing and will continue to serve the homeless and food insecurities in the resident Durango for years to come. And then tomorrow, DHS is hosting our annual Veterans Day Assembly, which we will do in collaboration with student council, FFA, and FCC LA. The choir and band will have a performance and we will host veterans from all across the community to attend. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming and joining us here and giving us an update. Thank you. Do we have anyone who would like to comment virtually?
No, mayor, no one has raised their hand.
Thank you. All right. With that, then I believe we can move on to item number 14, Introduction of Ordinances and Requests for Public Hearing. These following items are requests for public hearings at our upcoming meetings. We'll have limited discussion on these items, just a motion from council to see if there's support to place the items on the agenda for the upcoming meetings. Staff is available for questions, but staff presentations will occur at the meeting where the public is invited to participate and when council will vote on the merits of the matter. Starting with 14.1, A Request for a Public Hearing to Consider the 2024 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to set a public hearing to consider an appropriation ordinance for the 2024 adopted budget for November 21st, 2023.
Second.
Council discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Yazi?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Excellent. Moving on to item 14.2, A Request for a Public Hearing and Introduction of Ordinances for Land Use and Development Code Text Amendments Regarding Procedures, Commission Structure, and Accessory Dwelling Units. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to set a hearing date of November 21st, 2023, to conduct a first reading, allow for public comment, and take action on an ordinance related to the proposed amendment to the Land Use Development Code.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Item 14.3, A Request for a Public Hearing and Introduction of Ordinances for Land Use and Development Code Text Amendments Regarding the Fair Share Program. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to set a hearing date of November 21st, 2023, to conduct first reading, allow for public comment, and take action on an ordinance related to the proposed amendments to the Land Use and Development Code.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Yazi?
Yes.
And Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item 15.1, A Public Hearing on the City Manager's 2024 Proposed Budget Including Highway User Tax Fund Distributions. Staff presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Devon Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer. Just waiting for that presentation to come up here. So this is a public hearing to consider the 2024 City Manager's Proposed Budget and Highway User Tax Fund. This does fall under Financial Excellence and High Performing Government. So the public hearing is for the City Manager's Proposed Budget, which can be found. We have hard copies here at 949 East Second Avenue. We also have those online and state statute requires that the budget hearing process also address the proposed highway user tax funds. So the budget process, just for the folks here, that really starts with the strategic plan. And then budget guidance is distributed in May to the departments. The departments have until August to provide their departmental budgets. From there, it becomes the city manager's budget in September. And then councils from October all the way through November reconciliation, and then finally to adoption. The budget is prepared by Strategic Plan Goal Area. This allows for the Strategic Plan Goal Areas to reflect the budgetary impacts related to completing those goals as far as the strategic plan and the budget. As I had mentioned, the budget is available online at duranggov.org. The high-level combined summary was discussed at the study session today as well. And the best place to review the proposed budget is online or in person to view how that was proposed. This is a combined summary of staffing also included in the budget. And then finally, for the highway users' tax funds, state law requires that the budget hearing also address the proposed uses of highway user tax funds, which are distributed from gas taxes, forestreet impacts. And so the city expects to receive $589,853 in 2024. Also, the city expects to spend about $3.5 million for streets and related purposes in 2024. Again, you can view the 2024 Proposed Budget online at opengov by visiting duranggov.org. And next step, so here we are today, looking for the public hearing and input on the City Manager's Proposed Budget. On November 21st, the public hearing on the Appropriation Ordinances for Operating in Capital will be conducted. We also have the first reading of the ordinances for capital and operating. On December 5th, we'll have the second reading and final approval, two budget appropriations operating in capital. And then we will also have three resolutions for the capital budget, operating, and the mill levy certifications. And then the budget is adopted. And with that is the recommendation that the city council by motion conduct a public hearing and consider testimony given regarding the proposed 2024 budget.
Thank you so much, Devon. Just a reminder to council, this is just a public hearing for the community. And we'll have opportunities to comment at our future meetings when we're discussing this item. With that, do I have a motion from council?
Make a motion to conduct a public hearing on the City Manager's 2024 Proposed Budget Including Highway User Tax Distributions.
Do I have a second? I will second it. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any comments, any live or virtual? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, Fay, and we're keeping you running tonight. We need to vote to open the public hearing. So if you could do a roll call, please. We have a motion and a second on the table.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councillor Yazi?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes, thank you. And do we have anyone who would like to comment virtually?
No, mayor, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, I will close the public hearing. And we will move on to other, is there other new business from council?
Yes, I would like to, I would like to request an executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter. And I can work with the city attorney to have the correct wording for the agenda language and go over what information would be required and ensure adequate preparation time.
So that's not quite the way executive sessions work. If you would like an executive session, I think it's the authority of the city attorney by charter to request the executive session. And then it is put on the next regular agenda. And then you would have to vote at the time that it comes up on the agenda, whether to go into executive session or not. I, I mean, I would want to double check myself on that. This is catching me by surprise. I believe that to be the procedure. So that's something that we would handle, like I just explained. I do, I do know that all executive sessions have to be requested by the city attorney. And that's usually done after conference and one-on-ones beforehand. It's not something the council would vote on not knowing what it's about.
Well, I can't really discuss it during a public meeting. I don't want to accuse anybody. It has nothing to do with what happened during the study session, just so you know. I think it's an urgent matter and I think And I think it requires urgent attention. So I thought this would be the appropriate venue. Is it likely or is it definitely not possible to request that executive session?
It's impossible to do not knowing what it's about because I can't give you an opinion on it.
Right. I'm asking my counselors for that option.
I still think that, and again, I would want to double-check before we committed to anything. But my understanding of the charter, and Fay, you may want to help me out here, that all executive sessions, the city attorney has to request them or approve that they be placed on the agenda.
I believe that's true.
Okay.
I would have to review it, that everybody, that's true.
And I'm not trying to deflect the importance of whatever you're talking about. I'd be happy to stay late and meet with you and then have it... I mean, if we have to call a special session, that's within the authority of a majority of the council to do. We just can't do it off the cuff right now in this setting. So I will stay and work with you. If it's about me, we have to do something. That would be something different. But, and I would just call an outside council if that was the case. But in all seriousness, if it's something, I'm happy to stay late and discuss with you and verify that I'm giving you the right advice right now. And if we determine that it needs to be done in a special meeting, we got to have a special meeting with 24 hours' notice. Otherwise, it would wait until the next regular meeting where it would be a scheduled executive session.
So how would I request it? Let's say we have that discussion, and it becomes an executive session. Do we have to wait two weeks for the next meeting? Or is it something we can schedule faster?
It is something we would have the option to schedule faster, but you need to vote to the majority of the council to do that. What I would do, and again, this is really difficult to do without any advance notice, but I can see a situation where you explain something to me to where I felt it was appropriate to go to each, go to counselors in one-on-one sessions. And if a majority of them wanted to call a special meeting, then we could do that because it takes three counselors to call a special meeting.
So there's no way for me to request this executive session? That is very interesting. So if I feel like...
Not as a lone counselor.
Yeah, but even if it was about you? It's not about you, but let's say it is about you. How do I get to an executive session?
I think, I think Mr. Morgan is telling you that he'll advise you about how to do that after the meeting. But what I'm hearing is that we can't do that right now in this setting.
Yeah. And what I can tell you is that, and we've had this conversation many times, but one counselor is not the voice of the city. You always have to have three counselors to go forward.
So this is where I bring something up. If I have two other counselors that say yes, then we have an executive session.
But operating without any information, the best advice I can give you at this point is we can talk about it, and I will consult with the other counselors about it. And if there is a reason for three, and if they agree there's a reason to call a special meeting to do an executive session, they can do that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Is there other counselors?
Okay, so I have a question here. Okay, so I know this isn't the format, but, okay, you mentioned special meeting. And then is there a difference with that and executive session?
Yes, a special meeting is anything other than just a regularly scheduled... Charter says you have regularly scheduled meetings on the first Tuesday, the third Tuesday of every month. Anytime there is a need for a special meeting, consider something that needs to be dealt with in between those times. The council, by pulling of the three of them, have the right to call for a special meeting. So special just means not regular. An executive session is a part of either a special meeting or a regular meeting that the charter says the city attorney has to request after doing the investigation and talking to you guys about the necessity of it.
And just to clarify that a special meeting does have to be noticed and agendized 24 hours prior to that meeting.
Thank you.
If I ask for a special meeting, I can do it here?
No.
Special meeting, I can. An executive meeting, I can't.
Oh.
What? Let's see if I can explain it a different way because I'm not sure I'm making myself clear. You cannot request an executive session on your own as a counselor. If you have two of your colleagues that agree that a special meeting needs to be conducted where an executive session that I have requested is heard during that special session, then it can go forward.
So it sounds like you need to meet with Mark Morgan after this meeting and discuss what issue that you'd like to discuss.
Okay, so what I hear is that you're saying an executive session needs three votes to move forward.
That is also true, but that's not what I was trying to explain. What I was trying to explain is you need three people to call a special meeting. A special meeting could be about, if you had a disaster of some sort and you needed to come in and vote to expend emergency funds, that would be a reason to call a special meeting on 24 hours' notice. If an executive session is about something that is so imminent or so important that we need to conduct it at a special meeting, once I would know those facts, I would recommend, hey, guys, let's call a special meeting so we can do an executive session. I don't know anything that is being talked about here tonight, so I can't give you an answer about it until I meet outside of this forum to make those decisions.
Okay, so you're saying all the executive sessions that I've attended since I've been on council, you've contacted three counselors to hold those executive sessions?
No, ma'am. If there is a regular meeting and during the course of business and working with the staff and the council and whoever else or the community, if there is a need for an executive session, I then request that it be placed on the regular agenda. That doesn't take three votes.
By yourself, under your own discretion.
Correct. Just like the city manager has authority to put things on the agenda, I have the authority as the city attorney to place executive session matters on the agenda.
And then you have the authority to deny a request to put it on executive session.
That's correct. But in doing this for 25 years, I can tell you I've never done that.
So I'm going to ask one more question then on the same topic. If I ask for a special meeting and I get, assuming, two supports, and then I discuss it with you in more detail, you determine it's executive session, you could say the agenda is this, we have an agenda, but you make an executive session. And then we skip the having going back and forth, and we're going to have the decision right now.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm not tracking, but it seems like the cart's... You're trying to put the cart in front of the horse. I mean, I have to know what the executive session is going to be about before we would call...
If it's not an executive session, you have a special meeting.
What would be on the agenda of the special meeting besides the executive session?
A personnel matter. That's why I worded so carefully. It is to discuss a personnel matter.
Well...
So when I, if there's two councilors here that support that, we put a special meeting on the agenda. I discuss with you the contents. And if you feel it needs to be an executive session, you make that special meeting an executive session. If you say no, you can discuss it in public. You can discuss it in public.
I understand what you're asking now. And yeah, that is all correct.
Okay, so I change my comment. I'd like to request council support for a special meeting for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter. And I need two, two supporting... Should I make a motion for that?
It sounds like you did make a motion. That you're moving to request a special session about a personnel matter.
Second.
Discussion from council?
When are we going to have the meeting?
The next step. First, are we going to...
All right, we're having discussion now.
That's why I just asked a question.
And the question was?
When are we going to have the meeting?
I don't know. Let's see if we can go to the next step to have a discussion about if we're going to have a special meeting to talk about an executive session.
No, not exactly a personnel matter. So all we're doing is, I made a motion for it, got seconded for a special meeting to discuss a personnel matter. Now, you have the choice if you support that or not. If you don't support, we don't have that special meeting. If you do support it, we have, then we'll discuss, schedule, what would fit for everybody. So that the scheduling is completely separate.
Mayor, are we at discussion?
We are at discussion.
Okay, I'd like to have a brief word on discussion. My feeling is I do support this motion to have this discussion, to have a discussion because I feel like if there's somebody at question who questions the process that the council has worked so diligently at moving forward from the last council to understand the process, feel like they've resolved the issue, we can move forward. Whether our allegiance are right or wrong, I think a hearing of the concerns would be a positive move forward.
Other counselor comments? I'm not sure why we would go through the process of trying to schedule a special meeting for an executive session until we have a conversation with our attorney who would be able to call that executive session for us.
We're not speaking... Sorry to interrupt you. We're not speaking... If I speak with the city attorney and he says, no, you can have that in public, then we have a special meeting in public. I personally believe that it should be executive. But that doesn't matter. I would like to have that discussion with my fellow counselors. That's it. So I have a concern. I bring it forward, and I really feel that I need to discuss it with this council. I want to do it sooner than later. And I want, I will discuss it with the city attorney, and he can make his decision whether it's executive or not.
Other counselor comments?
It just puts everybody in a really weird position right now. I hope you know, you're putting everybody under the gun right now because you're calling a special meeting over something we know nothing about. And now, and now we're just all like, well, we either... You're putting this like we're with you or against you,